Okay. If I take the recording on, Mr. Boyd, are you ready?
Yeah.
You're on, wonderful. Today is June 6, 2025. This is a special meeting which was established at regular meeting. The purpose of this such meeting is to receive public comment on the budget. The budget was advertised in the section of the weeks in the Free Land Star newspaper. The budget was, copies of which were put in the Port Royal Town Library and in the business office for anyone to review. The public, after the public hearing, we have several items. First of which is a financial report of the access to records and CDs, certificate of deposits at Atlantic Union Bank. And then the final issue is gratification of the contract that our town manager to be, Mr. Tim Smith. And before we begin, we'd like to extend a hearty welcome to Tim Smith. And also to acknowledge the gratitude of the town of Port Royal for the good works of John Anzalino. Having done that, we will go to invocation and pledge allegiance. That's right. Good heavenly Father, we give you Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving for all your bounty, Thanksgiving for the gift of this little town. We pray that you'll grant wisdom and the ability for us to pursue just and right actions for the betterment of all citizens of this town. In your name, amen. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And to the people with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, Ms. Anzalino, would you please call the roll? Yes. Mayor Long, President. Vice Mayor Chanel.
Present.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Golden.
Present.
Thank you. We have a forum and let's see, our first order of business is amendments to the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Like to remove the minutes review.
A motion to remove approval of minutes from previous meetings. Is there a second to that?
No second.
Motion was made by Monica Chanel, seconded by Donna Wilkinson, to remove the minute, approval of minutes from previous meetings from this agenda. Discussion. Discussion. Hearing on, in favor or to vote, Chanel?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Long votes yes. Thank you. The motion is unanimous and carries. Next, we have public comment. Is there any comment? We have Carrie Collins from historical role here.
Yes, sir, I have the problem.
Thank you. And we're very fortunate and blessed to have Mr. Boyd's wife, whose name escaped me, Priscilla. Good, good to have you here. Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any comments? No, okay. Thank you. We will proceed to the public hearing. Public hearing will be called to order pursuant to Title 15.2, Section 2506, Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Public notice has been provided that the Port Royal Town Council will conduct a public hearing on Friday, June 6, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at 419 King Street for the purpose of receiving public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the town of Port Royal. We will now have a brief presentation on that budget from our interim town manager, Mr. Anzalino.
Good evening. As the mayor indicated, the budget has been duly advertised and publicly posted here in the offices and library. To my knowledge, we, when we come by to look at it, we've had no comments received in the office concerning the proposed budgets. The general fund or corporate budget, as they say, in your financial reports, this year has grown just a tad, $1,425. And the corporate budget is balanced with $193,000, $193,625 of expenditures and revenues. Some of the additions to the budget include adjustments for compensation for your new town manager, who will be duly recognized this evening. Also to booker some of your information technology services, as well as to train planning commissioners as they head down the path of updating comprehensive plan. Those are the significant changes in the budget overall, the corporate budget. The utilities budget is, has an increase of $14,402 as advertised. And that considers a 20% rate increase, both for the base fees as well as for your per gallon fees for in excess, per use in excess of 2,000 gallons per day. That, the council unanimously recommended the advertisement of that 20% increase, which is a, which is the subject of your second public hearing, because that is part of the town's code book and ordinances. That $14,402 would be used to build more, a better capital reserve than you currently have, because the town is faced with having to drill, monitoring well and report the findings of monitoring well drilling to the Department of Environmental Quality. It's part of your water withdrawal permit. That has to be completed in 2026. The town has applied for a grant through the Southeastern Crescent Regional Planning Commission. And that letter of intent was filed about two weeks ago. They should let us know soon as to whether or not the town will be invited to submit a full application. And that application would not only provide for the cost of the well, which is $70,000, and the analysis, analysis which goes into the well, but administrative fees for administering the grant, as well as addition of SCADA system, which is a remote sensing system, which will provide information to Caroline County, your utilities department, your utility operators for the system should anything go wrong. Right now, they're finding out about the problems with the water system. If somebody calls in, say, we don't have any water, and it takes them a while to get here. This system will send a signal to the operators on duty. It will tell, send them a message as to what's going on with it, what's wrong with the system, and will allow them to respond more quickly to the residents and customers of the Port Royal system. So that's a brief synopsis of the two budgets.
Thank you, sir. We will now open the public hearing, and we have Mr. Nathaniel Uppers has just joined us. We will now open the public hearing to public comment on the budget. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the proposed budget for the town of Port Royal?
Yes, thank you.
Pardon me?
None from Carrie.
Hearing, no one wants to speak to the issue. We will now close the public hearing. And let's see, and we will now vote on, we don't vote on this.
Okay, you have to wait a week. I have to wait a week. Right, and as it stands, pretty scheduled that we have provided, council had made a decision to defer any action on budget until your June 27th council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Therefore, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to report on Facebook. There were no messages. However, I ran it four times, and we did have about 12 people acknowledge it. So that it was a budget, that there were water rate increases, that the new town manager would be coming on board. All of those things were applied. Just to let you know that the public did see it, so many of whom, they just just might be here or put any comments in or send any private messages. Just want to give you that update.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, do we need a motion that we will vote on this 27th?
I don't think so. I think that you've already decided to schedule after your big council meeting. I think that that supposes.
Thank you. We will now go to a public hearing pursuant to Title 15.2, Section 2506 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. The public notice has been given that the Port Royal Town Council shall conduct a public hearing on Friday, June 6, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at 419 King Street for the purpose of receiving public comment on proposed amendments to Chapter 13, Section 13-411 fee schedule of the town code of the town of Port Royal. Mr. Anzalino, would you like to give us a brief description?
Very quickly, when the council was deliberating on your draft budget, which was presented by the town interim town manager, it became apparent when, and this just came, came knowledge to the town. And it's been there for a while, it's in your permit, but no one had ever raised the issue of drilling the well before, to my knowledge. And there's nothing in the records on discussion of drilling that monitoring well. So it was the decision of the council to begin an increase of water rates to build your capital reserves, because if anything happens to the system, you need to have money to be able to fix it. And you just can't pull that out of the air. So at your maybe 16th work session on the budget, maybe the 19th work session on the budget, the council decided to increase the base rates as well as the per gallon rates in excess of 2,000, by 20% across the board for both residential and commercial customers. That means that the base rate for a residential customer using up to 2,000 gallons, as noted in the ad, will be $54 per month, as opposed to $45 per month. And then it would be $6 per 1,000 gallons of gallons of usage between 2,100 and 5,000 gallons of water usage per month. And it will go up to, and it goes up, the more water you use, the more senior penalty. And that's typical of any locality, because you're trying to get folks to conserve water. Same holds true for the commercial rates. Commercial rates will increase for the, for 6,000 gallons of water usage from $60 per month to $72 per month. The per gallon fees for 1,000 gallons, for each 1,000 gallons increases 20% for the, for their rate schedule as well. Those fees will be collected by the county and allocated to the utilities fund, and they will be diverted to the capital reserve fund when they are collected. The council had it, and this will be important for you when you adopt the changes to the, to the ordinance. Now scheduled for June 27th as well. The council had decided at your work session not to have this implemented until, I believe, October 1, so that you would give Caroline County plenty of notice so that they could change their software and update their software so that they could handle the billing and we could get proper notices out to the citizens. And there will be notices placed on the utility bills as much as we can get on there, telling the citizens why this increase has happened. It will be going to a capital reserve. So your new town manager will be handling that in his interaction with the county. But that's the gist of why we're doing the utility rate increase, where it came from, and, you know, where the money will go.
Thank you, sir. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the issue of? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the issue?
Mr. Mayor, I can actually add something for you.
Oh, sure.
Jeff Boyd, Town Bowling Meeting. I am on the council, represent the council. Last night, we had our council meeting, and council and bowling ring did vote to increase their water rate structure across the board by 20%, and also initiated a capital service fee with every bill at a rate of $6.25 on each of the water and sewer for a total of $12.30. That is a motion that passed last night. So just, just to know what your neighbors are doing.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the issue of water rate change? Your last chance. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Let's see. And as the town manager noted, we will address this at our council meeting June 27. The minutes from previous meetings will be taken up at our June 27 meeting. Financial report from Mr. Anzalino.
Yes. Two things. First of all, council said that they wanted to defer your April 25 documents that were presented in the May pack after any discussion of question told us. Did not include them again, trying to conserve paper. We used almost full, we papered that, trying to get information out to the council. So, and I've talked to Tim about it. I think for the council's sake, in the town of Port Royal, it would be good to have a hard copy packet to you a couple days before the council meeting as opposed to sending you an electronic package. And that's just based upon my experience working with discovering body. I've worked in other places where if you send them a paper packet, they'd skin you a lot. And you just send an electronic package. But here, I think it's more realistic for you folks to have something you can put in your hands, look at, and you don't have to look at it on computer screen, because I know that my eyes get cross-eyed after a while looking at a computer screen. So Tim's got to be careful about how to do that. So we won't be giving you many electronic, well, town won't be giving you any, many electronic copies in the future. Have you happened to answer any questions about those financial reports?
Excuse me. On that note, I do want to have the mayor to have a digital copy of everything.
Okay. Okay.
And you can't do the paper copies without the digital. So you have the digital.
Yep.
It's just a matter of sending those out. And if you send it to the mayor, you should send it to everybody, so we're all treated equally.
Okay. Okay, so if you have any copy, questions about the April financial reports, if you have any answer them. If not, I have an additional financial report. We finally have access to our Atlantic Union accounts. If you have a memorandum in your packet, you've got a few attachments to it. First of all, on the certificate of deposit statement, the town has a patent one for this memorandum. The town has a total of five certificates of deposit, total value of $423,464, as of May 30. To date, you've earned $5,506 of interest, and the interest rates on the certificates range from 3.60% for four, then to 4.41%. You do have a certificate which is set to expire on June 16 of this year. Tim and I spoke to the Atlantic Union representative today, and the town was a rate of 409.
So sorry.
Right, 409 for renewal for a six-month period. I would urge you to renew for six months and ask Mr. Smith to move forward with that, because you may, you'll probably need some of that money for your ARPA expenditures. And we're not sure, we haven't still had a nail down which, what money is in what certificates. So you'll need some money for your ARPA expenditure.
Well, excuse me, I thought we've already spent the ARPA money.
We have. That would be plenty to give us from a bookkeeping example.
Okay, how much cash do we have in our cash accounts?
On your cash accounts, which are attached to, and you could take it simply out of cash account. The town's got five, five general fund or corporate accounts totaling $155,112.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's our intent, Tim's intent, to find out what those five accounts are for. You've got a corporate account, which is got $81,000 in.
Right.
And then you've got four other accounts, where we're not certain what those are accounts, or way into it's full checking accounts.
What we can do is get into detail with this in our regular meeting.
Okay. And you also have a utility account, checking account, which has a current, current balance of $34,628. The main point of memory in this, you now have access online. You have access, you have access to your banking information, which we just received. And you're in the process, and you do have action to take later on in the meeting concerning transferring over mine powers over accounts to Mr. Smith. And we've already initiated that work with Atlantic Union Bank. But you've got a lot of money, well, obviously you've got a lot. You have a significant amount of money for a town this size, and that, you know, $560,000. But you have, you now know what you got, what your interest rates are. So just wanted to make that, make the council aware.
Thank you. And point clarification, we really have two different entities at Atlantic Union. One is what we call the corporate account, and the second is our water account. And the council might, and the town manager might give consideration in the future of maybe taking the water account monies and putting them over at Truusit Bank, Truusit?
Trusit.
Trusit Bank. That way, it's easier to keep those monies separated. And the, as Mr. Anzalino pointed out, we do have a capital account for the waterworks, because if a pump breaks, the company that fixes it generally wants to be paid right then. And you either have the money or you don't. And we should have the money. And I don't know how much one of the large pumps costs, but everything today is incredibly expensive. So we're, it sounds like a lot of money, but it, when you pull that water account out, I think it's going to be a little bit, about 100 grand for the water account. And we might have to take some corporate money and put over to the water account at some point. Hopefully, we'll get the grant, and the grant will take care of not only the monitoring well, which is required. It's not something that we have a choice on. And also camera work and, and the instrument that Mr. Anzalino stated would monitor all our equipment. So hopefully, we'll get that. And is there anything else we need to do, Mr. Anzalino, on the financial report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next, we're at ratification of closed session discussion appointment. We're not going to do appointment of the town manager, clerk, treasurer, and closed session, are we?
No, no. This is the outcome of your discussion from last one. You have to ratify the consensus of the council.
Thank you for your clarification.
And see why we keep them around. And that, you also have Mr. Smith's letter of acceptance, offer of employment with the terms that you discussed in closed session, which is a matter of public record now, and his acceptance by signature of that letter of offer.
Okay. Perhaps the first order of business on the subject would be that would members of the town council want to read this aloud, or just quietly read it, or just accept it as it's presented? Because I know that, quite frankly, I don't think I've read it either.
Yeah, it's the same one we've reviewed.
That's right. I'm sorry. Well, but I haven't read it since we reviewed.
Okay.
There have been no changes, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. What would, what's the pleasure of the town council? Would you like to formally adopt this employment of Timothy Smith to be our town manager, treasurer, zoning administrator?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yes, you want to just adopt this?
Formally adopt.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion by Angela Golden that the town of Port Royal Council will formally adopt the letter of employment dated May 29, 2025, volume between Mr. Timothy C. Smith, 570 Collins Island Road, Tappahannock, Virginia, and the town of Port Royal. Is that your motion, Ms. Golden?
Yes. Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion?
I said go ahead. I've said yeah.
Ms. Donna Wilkinson seconded the motion. Discussion, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Last chance. Thank you. Mr. Noel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkinson? Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Long votes yes. The motion passed unanimously, and the motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Smith. You are now officially the town manager, clerk, treasurer, zoning administrator for the town of Port Royal. You are a man of many talents.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. We'd like to have, the mayor will make a motion that the motion is, the town of Port Royal is very, very grateful for the good work of Mr. John Anzalino.
No need to do this.
Yeah.
It's what I get paid to do.
I am, Mr. Anzalino helped us when all was in disarray, and it's greatly appreciated. But the motion is succinctly put, the town of Port Royal is, is grateful for the good works of Mr. Anzalino. That's the motion from the mayor. Who wants to second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, by Ms. Golden. Discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Noel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Golden?
Yes.
Long votes yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anzalino.
Thank you very much. That was unnecessary, but I do.
Oh, it was very necessary.
Okay. I won't argue the point.
Thank you. Well, resolution transferring fiduciary banking responsibilities. And we have, gosh, godly, we have a resolution already typed up.
This is the identical resolution which we just passed.
For you?
Yes. But it removes me from all accounts, places Mr. Smith in the same position.
Does the town council want this read in its entirety, or would you like to address this issue as it's provided?
No, I don't need to read it.
Pardon me?
I don't need to read the whole thing.
Okay.
I already read it.
Okay. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion that the town adopt this resolution presented here tonight, June 6, 2025, whereby this resolution will transfer financial and banking and other authorities to do with the town's finances to Mr. Timothy C. Smith, and will remove Mr. John Anzalino from all accounts. Someone like to make that motion?
I'll have that motion.
Thank you. Donna Wilkinson made the motion. Want me to repeat that? Want me to repeat that? I think it's clear. Is there a second?
I said.
The motion is seconded by, by Ms. Golden. Discussion, last chance. Ms. Knowles, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Wong votes yes. Motion is unanimous, adopted unanimously, and carries. Thank you very much. Again, this is a special call meeting. As such, it is only good for the issues that it was done for. And we will propose, is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I make a motion with adjourn?
Donna Wilkerson made a motion to adjourn. I don't think that's being seconded, but we'll ask the one anyway.
I'll second.
Ms. Golden seconds the motion, no discussion. All in favor, aye, to Shennault.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Wong, yes. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.